Good afternoon. Please be seated. Let me call to order the special joint city council and planning commission meeting of February 13, 2018. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Please follow me or join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Present. Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Ellsworth.
Here.
Cobberstein.
Here.
All present. Planning Commissioner Chair Kissner.
Here.
Vice Chair Hardy.
Here.
Present. Commissioner Knutson.
Here.
Monette.
Here.
And John Pont is...
He's sick.
He's absent.
Oh dear. Alright, the next item on the agenda is public forum. Any public comment is limited to the subject matter of the special meeting. Does anybody wish to speak at public forum? Seeing none, we'll go on to new business, which is the presentation of Fair Housing Napa Valley, and I'm going to disappear into the audience.
Thank you, Mayor Galbraith. Councilmembers, commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Pablo Zaderin. (inaudible)
Oh, there it goes. No, 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 no.
This is better. Yeah, there we go. Okay. So we'll do this one more time. Mayor Galbraith, city council members, commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Pablo Zaderin. I'm executive director for Fair Housing Napa Valley, and I'm here this afternoon just to provide an update on the yearly presentation that we've provided for the last few years regarding housing trends, opportunities, and solutions in St. Helena. Okay. So to start, I want to just go over Fair Housing Napa Valley's programs. We have three primary programs, those being fair housing, which includes investigations into allegations of discrimination in housing, ensuring equal access to housing for all residents in Napa County. Landlord-tenant disputes relate more to those issues which don't have it, are not regarding discrimination. So anything regarding your typical 30 or 60-day notices, repair needs, repair requests, Section 8 questions, all of those would fall under landlord-tenant, and they constitute roughly six out of every seven cases that we see walk in our doors. The third program covers both of these, both landlord-tenant and fair housing, and relates to the mobile home parks in Napa County. Our mobile home park population is often among our most vulnerable, as we saw following the earthquake, not as much following the fires, but due to the price in housing in mobile home parks, they're typically the most affordable option in the county. And so for that reason, we do have a lot of fair housing complaints that do result out of the parks. Our primary services that we provide to housing providers are review of policies and practices, mediation and conciliation of disputes, and training and education regarding discrimination in housing. If I can actually go back just to the last slide, we provide education and outreach in all of the following areas, to both housing providers and tenants alike. So whether that be a tenant group, a complex, as Sarah and I are going to go meet with after this meeting actually, in Calistoga. So we sometimes meet with tenants separately, with the housing provider separately, but we also offer the opportunity to meet with those groups together if that will bring forth a more viable resolution. And that sort of constitutes part, well, that constitutes part of our education and outreach program. It also constitutes the mediation and conciliation of disputes. For victims of discrimination or residents of housing, we offer education of their rights and responsibilities, review of complaints to establish their cases fall within the jurisdictions of a fair housing complaint, for example, and investigation of these complaints using a variety of different methods, which include testing, taking witness statements, conducting surveys, and general counseling to the tenant depending on their need and/or complaint. We also prepare complaints for litigation and the administrative enforcement process. Administrative enforcement typically occurs through HUD or the California Department of Fair Employment and Housing, and so we will assist tenants in filing those complaints and preparing the complaints themselves. Oftentimes, what we see occur is that a complaint that falls under a federally protected class, which we will review in just a second, is taken by HUD and then referred to the DFEH due to their own capacity issues at the moment. So oftentimes, a lot of these cases, although they may be referred to HUD, are ultimately heard by the DFEH, which is a separate administrative process. It's very, it's unique to the federal process. And we are available to the city and any residents of St. Helena if they have additional questions regarding the HUD or the DFEH process. As with housing providers, we also offer conciliation services and advocacy. Advocacy is not limited to residents of, to residents in housing. It can also occur on behalf of housing providers. If there is a problem tenant, for example, we can assist the housing provider in, through, in utilizing the proper channels to address whatever may be the issue at hand. And lastly, for victims of discrimination, we have complaint monitoring. After a complaint has been made, if it's been settled, we do monitor the property and the housing provider to ensure that they're complying with all federal and state fair housing laws. So the following are federal and state protected classes. The federal on the left, you'll see, race is fairly self-explanatory, as is color. That refers to the color of your skin, religion, and ethnicity as well. Sex has been broadened in recent years to include orientation and sexual identity. So there are additional GLBT protections through HUD, although some of those may be sort of under fire currently, but they were, they were approved through the last administration and are, those cases are now heard through HUD. The last two, disability and familial status, I would say are most common when complaints regarding fair housing are made. And familial, disability in particular affects residents of every corner of this county, including St. Helena. And many of those residents happen to reside in the mobile home parks, as we alluded to earlier. So that is the connection between some of these protected classes, vulnerable groups, and some of the areas in which we serve in this county. One protected class that is not up there on the federal side is national origin. National origin, I would say, is the third most common protected class. That refers to, well, it refers to ethnicity, I would say, closest to anything, but in the context of Napa County, it really refers to cases involving Hispanic and immigrant populations. So whether that person is from Mexico, or El Salvador, or Guatemala, those cases all would fall under national origin. Yes?
Could you explain what familial status means?
Familial status refers to the presence of children, and so those cases typically refer to unlawful restrictions on children within a property, discriminatory actions against a family or a household or individual within a household based on the presence of a child. And so within the state of, within the state of California, there are additional protections. Those are age, ancestry, medical condition, as well as genetic information, marital status, source of income, and arbitrary characteristics, which is sort of a catch-all for, and very rarely used. But for example, if we saw within one complex that five out of five applicants with tattoos were denied, while non-tattooed applicants were accepted, that might constitute, it might constitute arbitrary discrimination. We would have to conduct a very thorough investigation to ensure that that was the only variable by which a person was being considered for it to really apply.
Is it okay to ask a question?
Yes, although I would encourage general questions, maybe for the end and the essence of time.
Are there any protection for exonerations for selling?
No. That's a great question, actually. Without going into too much detail, protections for people with criminal backgrounds is a hot topic in housing right now. It affects a lot, a large population of people's access to housing, any type of housing. And it really puts them at a disadvantage in a highly competitive rental market such as Napa County, such as San Mateo or San Francisco County, or anywhere else in the Bay Area. So I think, I believe San Francisco does have a couple of protections for people with criminal backgrounds, but I believe as far as the Bay Area is concerned, that is the only city to have those types of protections.
Can you ask that question legally?
We, yes, they can. We can, but we also are encouraging landlords to be a little bit more flexible with that, with that area. The following slides are more of a continuation of what I've presented in the last couple of years, so you may remember some of this information, but it has been updated using the most recent census data that is available. So the population of Napa, as we see, has continued to rise roughly, by roughly 7,000 residents in the last six to seven years. Within that time, St. Helena's has increased by a few hundred. During that time, only 1,000 rental units, rental housing units were added across the county. Now, this is somewhat older data, so it does not include the last couple of years, but even if we assume that enough building had occurred over the last couple of years, clearly the rate of development is not meeting the increase in population. There's also been an increase in renter households, both as a continuation of the recession, which is now going on 10 years old, but also as a result of the last few disasters that have struck Napa County. The earthquake being the major one in 2014, and the most recent fires will affect this number of, of the number of renters, not only within St. Helena, but within Napa County. If we see that the median household, median household income in St. Helena, for example, is 85,000, while the median home value is near, more than 10 times that, it becomes obvious that the option to buy in this area is not likely for many. I say that with, with no opinion, that's simply a fact, but it does highlight the need for accessible housing for a large portion of the population, which right now simply does not exist, both in St. Helena and in Napa County. And I know I'm also not, you know, providing any, any new news with all these facts, but it is one of the most worrisome trends for us as a fair housing agency. Excuse me. The increased demand and the limited housing stock and available land has not only led to increased rents and land costs, but it's also led to an increase in, in no cause evictions and, and exorbitant rent, rent increases. And what we have been fortunate with following the fire in the last couple of months has been that there's been a limit on price gouging with rents. So rents currently cannot be increased by more than 10% within the county. But that does not mean that already high rents are attainable for many families, especially those affected by the fires. And so low, very low, and extremely low income residents are essentially priced out. They're limited in their access to affordable housing options in Napa County as a result of the aforementioned factors, and are priced out of the region. To highlight that, as of 2015, 78% of St. Helena employees, that is, workers within the city of St. Helena, lived outside of the city. This especially affects households with children and members of other protected classes, including Latino and disabled and senior households. With the aging populace in St. Helena, as well as in the rest of Napa County, this is one of many physical and cultural barriers to equal access to affordable housing within Napa County. I say cultural barriers because, as I mentioned, this affects the Latino population as well. Their understanding of housing laws, of rental laws, of what their rights and responsibilities are within the rental housing market tend to, tend to vary. And because of that, there is a varying degree of compliance with leases, there is a varying degree of understanding of what their responsibilities are to their housing provider, and that can lead to issues further on down the line with them and their tenancy. To go back to the fire, the Napa Fire Complex, the 2017 Napa Fire Complex put additional strains on tenants, property owners, and the rental housing market. Property losses had, had a huge effect on the rental housing stock, not so much in Napa County. I understand that there were only a few hundred structures lost, but the fact that Santa Rosa, for example, lost 5% of their rental housing stock, over 2,000 units, or 5,000 units, I believe, that will have a trickle-down effect on neighboring counties and later on the rest of the Bay Area. That's a huge portion of their population to lose housing, and that will only affect workers in Calistoga, for example, later workers further down valley. And as we see those effects over the next couple of years, it will be interesting to see what becomes more available in terms of affordable housing, but also what they call the rental hotspots in different areas in the North Bay especially. Due to the widespread damage and destruction, there was a significant loss of employment and income, and that was felt countywide. As an agency in the city of Napa, I can tell you that the majority of the cases associated with the fires that we saw immediately in the office dealt with loss of income and due to that, a difficulty in paying rent. Luckily, there were a number of financial assistance programs available that, that were able to provide some assistance, but in most cases, they provided a couple of thousand dollars, which in this rental market is roughly a month or two of rent, if that. And so what we see a few months after the fact is a continuing need for this financial assistance. It's still, and other residual effects felt from that loss of employment. This especially affected, as you might imagine, low-income population, low-income households and low-income populations, including families with children, and fixed income disabled households and senior households. As I mentioned, there was a price gouging ban that was implemented and is in effect through April of 2018. But after April of 2018, we already have landlords asking us, how soon after that date can they give their next rental increase? So they are, they're simply biding their time, and they're waiting, and after April, I'm sure we will see a new wave of rent-related issues. To continue with, with the effects of the housing trends, local communities are substantially impacted. It increases commuter traffic. There is an impact on attendance in schools and neighborhoods. The dynamics of neighborhoods are changed completely. There's also an upsurge in unlawful detainer cases that are heard by the court system, and the lack of options leads some to stay past their move-out date. This may also occur in the context of the fire in creating overcrowded situations in many, in many households. Families that are sharing their home or their apartment with additional family members or entire family units is something that we've seen more of recently, and it's something that I imagine will be fairly common, at least for the next half-year. We are also, we may also see a, an upsurge in illegal housing units, and because of that, neglect or a failure to report needed repairs by the tenants in place. Illegally constructed housing may also result in safety hazards and health hazards, as we've seen in the past, as well as habitability issues. All of these issues require an allocation of city and county resources to address them, when in fact, there are other housing-related needs that those resources could go to. The following are pictures of, that we've, that we've taken at various times in our investigations, and I show them during the presentation to highlight some of the issues that we see as an agency. This is a picture of severe mold inside of a home. Black mold becomes very common around this time of year, during the winter. There hasn't been as much rain as there was last year, but mold will still appear nonetheless, and especially in some areas up-valley that see less sun throughout the day. If they're in, in the woods or in similar areas, mold can, can be a common occurrence. Along with mold is the growth of fungus, if not treated immediately. So if there are neglected properties, both by the tenant and by the landlord that are not addressed, this was found inside of the home of a tenant. She did not want to, she did not want to pick this growth, but she also didn't notify her landlord in time, which is why it was the size that it was when we arrived at the I showed this picture just to, as a reminder that we've, Fair Housing Napa Valley has been a, has been a substantial partner within disaster relief and response efforts, both following the earthquake and following the fire. We have been a member of the Napa Valley Community Organizations Active in Disaster Group, which incorporates organizations across Napa County, including the Up Valley Family Centers. And we've also worked with local cities and municipalities to ensure that any disaster-related effects that we can assist with are addressed as expeditiously as possible. Along with the Napa Valley COAD, that is, the Community Organizations Active in Disaster, we're also involved in long-term recovery, and our agency is also providing disaster relief, relief services. So if any residents of St. Helena were affected by the fire, please have them contact our agency, and we'd be happy to assist them. This is a photo of exposed siding, so again, a, an issue of a neglect, of a neglected property. Oftentimes, I will add that tenants are not aware of how to properly report or ask for a repair to their property. If they do it by phone, the landlord, if they are not on top of their responsibilities, may neglect the request. And at that point, the tenant has no documentation to verify that they did indeed make that request. What we tell tenants all the time is to remain documented, to provide written, written requests, written notifications whenever possible, to ensure that these types of issues are addressed as soon as possible. And this is a photo of a bathroom that suffered a bad leak. The home was not evacuated, so it was still, still being used while the repairs were taking place. As you'll see here, there is exposed piping. There are all sorts of hygiene and safety issues regarding this, this housing situation. Ultimately, the landlord, I believe, this, this is an older photo, but I believe the landlord was forced to vacate the units and pay for relocation temporarily while the, while the repairs were finished, and that included concealing the pipes, finishing the drywall, and ensuring that there was no rot or moisture issues that would lead to mold, as we saw in one of the previous pictures. We also tend to find a lot of broken windows, though you might not, you might not assume so many tenants don't report broken windows for a variety of reasons, including what, as I just mentioned, a, an inexperience with properly reporting these types of issues. What oftentimes happens is landlords are also negligible in fixing these problems. And especially in times of warmer weather, when it might not be as big of an issue, they may go days or weeks without fixing the actual broken window. A broken window is a habitability concern and makes a property inhabitable, uninhabitable when, when it occurs. So when these cases occur, we encourage tenants not only to contact us directly, but also to contact city code enforcement to ensure that they're made aware of the issue and that that helps getting it addressed. And this is a photo of a shower fixture that is broken. The grips are in, in place there to make sure that the handle functions fully. This is obviously not, not a legal way to maintain the shower. This tenant had this situation in place for quite some time before it was reported to our agency, but is another example of temporary repairs. Now, if in using this grip, for example, a tenant strips, strips part of the, the screw head on place, and there's additional work that needs to be done as a result of that, that's the tenant's responsibility. And for that reason, we encourage them to report these issues as soon as possible so that a bad problem isn't made worse by the passage of more time and by continued use in this case. This constitutes also a habitability concern under code enforcement standards. When a carpet presents a tripping hazard, or when a tear in a carpet presents a tripping hazard, that is the only time that code enforcement gets involved. If a carpet is deemed dirty or, or any other type of related condition, code enforcement will not come out. But if there is a tripping hazard present, you can report that to code enforcement, and that is something that we teach all of our tenants. This is another example of a habitability issue, and that is a non-working smoke detector or a CO2 detector. In this case, the entire unit has been pulled out. There are issues, there are times when the tenant does this for reasons of cooking or other related reasons, but there are also times where a tenant moves into a unit without a working detector, and that is not addressed. In both of those cases, our agency is available to assist those households and, and ensure work with the appropriate code enforcement department to ensure that that's addressed. And lastly, is our, is our pest picture. Unfortunately, we run into very, a variety of different pest issues. In-housing, cockroaches are one, rodents and other vermin are another. In all of those cases, code enforcement typically gets involved, but there are, there can be any number of other related issues, either to the, the physical structures within the homes, so example, the walls or, or doors or things like that, but also to the health of the families and the tenants living in the homes, especially if there are children present or anybody with a disability that might be more susceptible to related diseases. Again, if these issues do arise, our agency is, our agency addresses these issues on a daily basis. And this is one more picture of mold. This, this is the most common type of mold that we see, I would say, on the window sill or on the walls in homes, typically due to either poor ventilation, a leak, a combination of both, which also includes not, not complying with their responsibilities as tenants. A lot of tenants will not open windows for a variety of reasons, with that trapped humidity can lead to mold issues such as this. So options for affordable housing, and the, the following options are presented not as the most viable, but because they're the most common in terms of, of affordable options. Napa Valley Community Housing and the Housing Authority of the City of Napa both have extremely long waitlists at this time. So it is, it's very difficult for a tenant to depend on short-term housing solutions through either one of these entities, but they are both extremely valuable partners to us as an agency, and they both have worked with us in maintaining a number of tenants, both housed and in compliance with a variety of rules and, and other housing-related issues. A place to live is a, is a room-sharing service. I'm sorry. Sarah, Sarah is our education and outreach coordinator. She has a little bit more experience.
Senator Leal, they, they hope the myriad of housing placement opportunities as far as securing employment as well as permanent housing, even though they are out of Leal, they do service Napa County, so it would be the city of Galbraith. (inaudible).
Yes. And there are a number of other room-sharing programs that have come up, another one through the Housing Authority of the City of Napa in partnership with Napa Valley Community Housing. There are more and more of these types of programs coming available. In addition to that, there are local, local advocates, such as our town, St. Helena, here in, in St. Helena, that try to affect change on a local level. I wanted to skip ahead here to highlight two, two newer trends in the affordable housing solutions area, and that is microhomes, and also the use, and I meant to include it in the, in the presentation, I apologize, the use of accessory dwelling units. And I know that that's been a big push across the county, what they refer to as granny units. These secondary units are providing housing, cheap housing, affordable housing, for a number of vulnerable populations and also tenants in need. They provide a portion, in, in Fair Housing Napa Valley's opinion, a portion of the solution, but they are nonetheless part of the solution. And to continue on possible solutions and remedies, Fair Housing Napa Valley encourages the City of St. Helena to continue its implementation of its most recent housing element goals, addressing governmental and non-governmental... addressing governmental and non-governmental impediments, diversifying its housing stock, efficient land use in high-quality neighborhoods, and assisting to support affordable, affordable housing, as well as a continued construction and development of additional units for low to moderate-income households, moderate-income households. The Rena numbers that I, that are there, I didn't, I could not find more updated numbers, but there is clearly a need for, for additional development, not just in St. Helena, but in the rest of Napa County, for the development of affordable housing. I know that here in the city of St. Helena, the Turley Project is, is in the works. In Napa County, in the city of Napa, there are a number of developments going up, and this is a county-wide effort. It's not going to be solved by one city, by one, by one jurisdiction. There's collaboration needed among all jurisdictions, community development corporations, and community stakeholders. And we, we also would promote the, the awareness of existing affordable housing programs and agencies. So promoting regular communication among housing advocates and affordable housing agencies to ensure resident needs are met, examining new and existing housing programs for the compatibility, for compatibility with low, low-income residents and households, and addressing additional policies which potentially affect the current housing climate. Those additional policies may vary, and they may change most immediately due to the fires. So there may be a bigger push in one area or another in terms of housing. As of right now, as I mentioned, we have not seen all of the immediate housing trends out, resulting from the fires in Napa County. I believe that loss of wages will be something that affects residents through the end of the year, especially low, low-income residents, that it may take them a year to really rebound financially from, from the disaster, but that remains to be seen. I, I did, and I apologize. Oh, I apologize. I, I meant to add in a, a mention here also to the city council's updated three-year goals regarding housing. I read them. I thought that it's a great start. The idea of a white paper with community feedback, I think, would be a great, great place to start. If Fair Housing Napa Valley can assist in that process, please let us know how, and we'd be happy to do so. I also, I was also excited to see a consideration for rent stabilization in the mobile home parks. As I mentioned, these are some of our most vulnerable populations, and stabilizing rent in some sort of long-lasting way could go a long way towards maintaining them as an affordable option. So I apologize for looking for a sentence that was not there. Lastly, I'm going to speak about the affirmatively furthering fair housing requirement and how that affects affordable housing. This requirement has been in place through the Fair Housing Act since its inception in 1968. It was not enforced in any type of meaningful way until the Obama administration. And what it, what it obligates is any entitlement jurisdiction, meaning a jurisdiction that receives federal funding to take meaningful actions that foster inclusive communities free from barriers, that restrict access to opportunity based on protected characteristics, and address significant disparities in housing needs and in access to opportunity. It, it is still a, it is still something that our agency fully supports and is trying to uphold. The Trump administration has canceled this as a requirement temporarily, but we, as an agency, continue to promote it. And so if in working with you all as a city, this is brought up, I just want to make sure that there is some context as to what this pertains to and what we're referring to if AFFH is ever brought up. Napa's housing crisis, as I mentioned, affects members of protected classes, so families with children, disabled, the disabled community, seniors, Latinos, and immigrant community, and many others, and the shortage of affordable housing stock, as well as in general rental housing stock right now, is a, is a significant barrier to a more inclusive St. Helena and Napa County. Equal housing opportunities are made that much more difficult following the 27, 2017 Napa Fire Complex. Just a quick statistic, I had spoken with somebody at the Housing Authority that had mentioned the vacancy rate in rental housing was below 2%, between 1% to 2% in the city of Napa prior to the fires. So there were already not many options to speak of in the city of Napa, which is the largest city in, in the county and has the most available housing. So we can only imagine that these, these circumstances are made that much worse and are that much more dire for some households following the, following the fires. And vital, it's vital that these, that vulnerable residents receive the assistance to meet their housing needs, receive resources for affordable housing opportunities, and receive continued counseling to ensure that their housing needs are met. And with that, I thank you for your time, and we'll take your questions. Yes?
I was just wondering, when you talked about recording and the Black and House, have you noticed since this new administration that reports have gone down at all because of fears of, you know, I know, I don't know if Napa County is a sanctuary county, but have you noticed anything?
Well, what I will say we've noticed is a, a general reluctance by the Latino and immigrant, or not, I shouldn't say immigrant, I don't know if they're immigrants, but by the Latino community to come forward, for example, for disaster relief, for disaster benefits. There was a significant, what advocates saw as shortage of Latino representation in seeking those benefits, especially early on, in reporting different types of household housing issues. I would say there's been some reluctance. I, I can't, I can't attribute it directly to the administration or not, but there has been across the board, from what I understand from one of my board members, a drop in school attendance, so it is affecting, it is affecting the population here in Napa County in various Any other questions? I'm sorry?
Are there any further questions?
I've got a microphone. Question?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.